Order the November 16, 2015 Common Council Meeting. We please stand for invocation and if you don't mind, we take a minute because this is the anniversary of Pearl Harbor.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We pray that you would watch over us as we conduct the city business. We pray for our employees. We pray for the administration and council members in hope of us to represent the city in an appropriate way. We thank you for the way you blessed Jeffersonville. We pray that you would be with the kids of the city and bless them. Pray that you would be with us as we're in the Christmas season, help things to go smoothly and well here for us. We pray for those communities that are struggling. We pray for those communities that have had difficult issues faced them and trauma faced them because of terrorist acts. We pray for our first responders and our police and safety crews and we pray that you'd watch over them. In Christ, let me pray. Amen.
Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nathan. Have a roll call, please. Counselperson Smith. Counselperson Stavney.
Here.
Counselperson Wadsworth.
Present.
Counselperson Sellers.
Present.
Counselperson Webb.
Present.
Counselperson Gill.
Present.
Counselperson Julius.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel. Let the record reflect all nine council members are present. Have minutes to be approved of our regular proceedings on November 16, 2015, and I understand there's some corrections.
Well, in going through them, I noticed on the first item, on page number two, it doesn't actually say a vote was taken. It says that counselperson Owen made a motion to deny the rezoning based on the fact that petitioner is going through the BCA. But it never says that there was a second or a vote taken.
I believe, Connie, did you not second that?
I think so.
I know I changed my motion to be in the affirmative at the direction of the attorneys, which I didn't agree with at the time.
We'll have to double check, but I do believe it was counselperson Sellers.
I know, right? One of the other statements in there, and I wasn't here for the meeting, so I was just reading through. City Attorney Merkley stated we need to open a public hearing since it needs something about, because of the state statutes, the council has to formally act on this ordinance within 90 days or it will be adopted as passed. So I just want to make sure that if it was voted down, that the record reflects that.
And did you have something under new business number two and the salary ordinance? Did you want to reflect the sewer?
Well, the only thing, again, I wasn't at the meeting, but I know the mayor's salary is not $64,000 and the plan wasn't to, or the intention wasn't to increase it to 69 because I think he makes 84 between the general fund and the sewer, and I think there was talk of going to 94 or something to that effect.
May I interject? That was with the only for general fund. That reflected only the general fund. That's how it was brought in there.
So in this case, we're increasing it by 5,000? Are we not increasing sewer by 5,000 at the same time?
If you read later, at page three, almost the very last sentence of business number two, I made the motion to change it to 74 instead of 69. And then, but that's out of general. And then there's 20 that comes out of sewer that we said we're not changing.
I'll make sure to get it right.
And I believe, Kim, to have all that reflected in our salary ordinance, that's in our packet.
This year, the changes are follows what was on the salary ordinance. And then what was actually passed was the motion that was made by counselperson Samuel is what was actually passed. But this is how it reflected in the salary ordinance.
Is that a motion to change it?
So on agenda item one, where it says counselperson Owen made a motion to deny the rezoning based on the fact that petitioner is going through BCA, second, we would add second by Ms. Sellers. And then it would read, second by Ms. Sellers, City Attorney, open public hearing. President Gill, open public hearing, 7:09, closed at 7:10. Motion passed, 6:00. Right?
We probably need to go back and listen to what they tell you. We will. We'll have a corrective tomorrow and make sure that the correction is also attached, the paragraph is attached to the next one.
There are no other changes that make a motion to approve as amended?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second for the amended minutes. Any further discussion or questions?
I wasn't here, I'm going to abstain.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Have approval of the agenda.
There are no changes, motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved.
Requesting approval of claims totaling $1,322,373.87.
I had a couple of questions or comments. I notice we were spending $1,400, I guess it's to less, I don't know. $1,400 to Jeff High Sports in just this one claims. 500 to the basketball team, 200 to the swim team, 450 to the theater, and 250 to, looks like, the cheerleaders. And I just, we get criticized for reducing the budget, or we have been criticized for reducing the mayor's budget, but the intent was not to spend tax dollars on this one school. Tax dollars goes to the school, and I understand supporting it to a point, but I didn't go to the trouble of looking at how much all year we've spent to Jeff High. And this is certainly not against Jeff High, but I just wanted to bring that out. And then we're spending $500 to two churches and it says donation.
I was going to speak on that.
Okay, then I won't. Moving on, I notice also under, we're renting a church facility on page seven. We usually always have the Christmas luncheon in one of our city buildings and we're spending $860 to the renting out of the hall rental. Again, I'm not, the mayor has it within his ability to make that choice, I assume. I just, we haven't done it before and I question while we're doing that.
And on that claim is for a seven-hour rental and a $300 fee for cleanup that was included in that.
Let me go ahead through these and if anybody wants to comment, they're welcome to. Page 11, under River Stage, we're paying $800 for cleanup to Hamhead LLC. Usually we, our Parks Department does all that. I don't understand why we're subbing that out, and there may be a very good reason.
Where's that at on board?
That's on page 11, under River Stage, $800 special event cleanup.
Was that in the stack of claims that you went through, Connie? They weren't in the ones, that particular one wasn't in the ones that I went through?
My last one, and then I'll let anybody comment. And Amy, this is, I guess, for you, a question for you.
Okay.
Those others were just observations. On page, these are dealing with the police under page two, and then I'm also going to go to 14. But as to Word Systems, page two, there's an $8,542 claim. Then on page 14, under Lloyd, under the same Word Systems, there's a partial payment for $6,000, and then on down, Word System, partial payments for $6,700. So we have three claims to the same place for totaling $21,242. And because there's two under Lloyd, I didn't know if those were, got confused and should have been either joined together or only one of them, because I didn't know why we'd have two under Lloyd.
Do we know even what that system is?
I have no idea.
Do you know the last thing, contractually? We're...
It just says Word Systems Incorporated. And I just thought it was odd that we had three payments to them under two different funds.
I would assume they had to allocate it across multiple GL numbers due to budget constraints.
Okay.
Yeah, like in their...
It is under different ones under Lloyd. I see that.
Is this a new system or is this a...
I'm not familiar with what it is.
We need to find out what it is if you could do that for us.
Okay.
That's enough, I'm sure. That's all I had. I just saw those and hadn't had a chance to comment.
When Lisa and I were in Friday checking claims, I noticed the two payments to the churches for 250. I actually called Mr. Merkley and I said, "What is this for? Because it needs to be more than just donation." And he said, "Oh, it's just the end of the year. We had extra money that was left over." And I questioned whether politically we should be making donations to churches. And I'm a Christian, graduated with a Bachelor of Theology degree, don't have a problem with giving money to churches, but I do it myself because of all my constituents, some of them aren't even religious people and would not like their money going to churches. But then today, Mr. Merkley just came up and told me that they're actually going for speakers who are going to be speaking at the swearing-in ceremonies. I guess Republicans and Democrats are doing it together this year. But my point on that is, that is still not a city function. That is a political organization function, and it should be paid for out of their campaign funds, or it should be, 250 should be paid by the Democrat Party and 250 should be paid by the Republican Party. But that should not come out of city funds. And that's where I stand on that. This is the same thing when the mayor came into office, if you all remember, I think it was the very first year, and he tried to pay to go to the Lincoln Day or something. And I said, "We cannot pay for that out of city funds." That is a political function, and to me, this is the same thing.
Counselperson Sellers and myself, we did call our counsel, and he did recommend that we pull him.
Based upon the information Friday, which at that time, you all said it just was a donation without any service.
That's what we were told.
And then just this afternoon, Mr. Merkley contacted me. According to what Mr. Merkley told me is that those donations, they say donation, but really it's for the speakers that were going to the city square.
So this is another thing?
Well, I'm just saying, based upon that, if that is true, then I think technically if there's a service being performed for that, then technically it could be allowed to go.
It could be, except that...
Because that would be different than a donation if the speakers are...
But I still think that is a political function and not a function of the city. Never before have we gone through the city to have, we all know that, that is a political function. And the other thing I...
Political parties have done it. Political parties are not sponsoring this, sponsored by the city, by the mayor's office to have a bipartisan swearing-in ceremony.
I still don't agree with it. Another thing is, I don't know how long they're going to be speaking for, but that's a pretty good for damn. And normally, they take 20 to 30 minutes to do this, so unless they're each speaking an hour or something. That's my thoughts on it. It should be sponsored by the parties.
I can see where that would come from, because that's how it's always been done. But it is a required function to hold office, to be sworn in. And it is a bipartisan event. And if you think of other units of government, the governors, the state of Kentucky is going to pay for the governor swearing-in tomorrow. That's going to be tens of thousands of dollars paid for by taxpayers. I'm not giving an opinion one way or another, but it's not out of the question. I mean, it's not, I don't think swearing-in is strictly a party function.
All I know is when I was told Monday or Friday, oh no, this was just a donation, and then today, lo and behold, it's because, oh no, they're going to be speaking at the swearing-in. I just don't...
And according to the claim, it does not state that on the claim.
No, it does not.
So we need to be very, we need to be specific that that is stated on the claim if you are not going to pull it, or if you're going to pull it, or what, that that does need to be, in my opinion, the state board accounts. That does need to be stated on that, for a speaker.
And it should have been known at that time. It should have been known at that time that that's what was going. I just think it's a little suspect.
I just think the mayor was trying to get all the good footing with the council and all the council members, all of them, Democrats and the same time, along with the clerk, two ministers, one from First Christian Church, one minister from Trinity, to speak at the ceremony. We want to give faith, a donation to each of those congregations would be appropriate. I can go through the list, donations that the city councils made the past four years. I'm sure some taxpayer might question whether or not their tax dollars should have been spent on those as well.
We can bring them up.
One of the other things that Mr. Samuel had mentioned was paying for a venue for our Christmas party. And I don't know what that total is, but the reason that I think we decided to go outside for a venue this year instead of having it at the Street Department again is that there was a sense, it was discussed on Wednesday, that there was a sense that it was kind of a, a little bit of a burden on the Street Department to have everybody that works for the city come to their facility. Them have to make sure that it's clean and ready for the party, them have to make sure it's cleaned up and functional again after the party. It was just going to be easier and much more enjoyable for all of the employees if we could just go offsite and do it somewhere else. So I don't know why a certain place was chosen or whatnot, but I do know why the decision was made not to have it at the Street Department.
As much as I think Kim's speaker, I believe, fell so appropriate out of game, and I believe nearly $10,000, I believe.
That was for...
Yeah. I did, Kim did speak to me about that too, and I believe that it was because we didn't have something in the spring, and then, so this is the first time we've done this.
The main reason I did that, our committee did that for the...
Kim, come to the microphone.
For the church was because every year we have, it's supposed to be an employee appreciation and holiday dinner for employees, but you've got about 34 employees who really don't get appreciated because they're setting up, tearing down, and getting rid of the food, and really don't have time to enjoy it. So since the city council put the money in my budget last year, our committee thought it would be a perfect opportunity to find a place that was big enough to host 300 people and actually have all of our employees be able to truly show up without having to set up tables, tear down tables, take picnic tables from the maintenance barn of the Parks Department over to the church, and vice versa, and clean up after 300 people.
Can you hear me, Jim?
It's going to be in the gymnasium, yeah. And they have enough to seat about 300, 350 people. And then we said, "How much is it going to cost to clean up? Don't care who cleans it up, we just don't want our employees. We want our employees to be able to show up, appreciate an employee appreciation, a holiday dinner, and leave like most of the rest of us get to do." So if that needs to change for next year, then that's, you know, that's your decision. But we do have a committee, and that was kind of our decision, and we thought we had a pretty good rationale for that decision. And a lot of the employees were very appreciative. Oftentimes every year, whether you hear it or not, people don't really mind City Services' garage, but there are trashcans up there, there are trucks up there, there are fumes with those big torch blower things, if it's a cold day smelling like diesel fuel, and it's not the cleanest of environments in which to be eating.
I don't think counselperson Samuel was...
I thought we made a good decision.
I think he was just questioning because it was out of the norm.
Oh, that, yeah.
I didn't ask to have a pool or anything.
Yeah, we never had money for, but last year, you all put that money in the HR budget, so we ran with it. There's still money left, we didn't spend it all. So there's only about $5,000 left.
Thanks, Kim. I'll make a motion to approve unless there's anything else.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the claims. Is there any further discussion, comment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Was that two? Okay. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Report of the clerk.
I don't have anything at this time.
And we will move on to unfinished business. Kim Calabro, the 2015 OR 62, an ordinance fixing salaries for elected officials of the city of Jeffersonville.
Okay. You have in front of you, as Nathan mentioned a few minutes ago, he did make a motion for the mayor's salary to move from $69,000 to $74,000.
Out of general fund?
Yes, out of the general fund. No changes that I'm aware of that were motions that were made under the mayor's budget under the sewer. And the other changes remain as discussed last month. The city court judge will be eliminated. Council president will go from $15,000 to $17,000. Counsel persons will go from 13 to 15.
And then I just wanted to make a comment just so the public knows that this, by state statute, we have to do this before each election cycle, so it's usually due, it usually takes place in December before the election cycle. And when you're, I know it's the salaries, you're thinking, "Well, we're voting on raises," but in reality, the way that, the approach that I've taken was, we compared other cities, class-two cities, with our population. I know I looked at Greenwood, Lawrence, Anderson, Elkheart, Mashaw, I don't know, Mashaw Walker and New Albany. And for the clerk, they were kind of, the only 2016 was from Greenwood, and that was New Albany, of course, was the lowest at 43,672, but that was 2014 number. And then Lawrence was the highest at $65,000. And from the mayor and those cities of Anderson, Elkheart, Greenwood, they ranged from $72,757 to $85,000. And the council was arranged from anywhere, the lowest was $9,200 to $15,000. So we just kind of wanted to bring them up to the average of other class-two cities with our population. I don't know if anyone wants to vote on raises, or if they're thinking, oh, we're sitting back giving raises, how we decide. I just wanted the public to know that there is a method to this, that we just kind of compare. That's the only fair way we can do that in looking through IAC with their numbers, because we can't compare ourselves to like a company up in River Ridge or whatever. Like I said, it's the most fair way I know of doing it.
And the other thing is, we don't do it every year. I mean, I don't think...
Every four.
It's every four years when we normally do. I mean, we could do it every year, maybe we could just raise it a percentage or something every year, but, so I don't think it's out of the ordinary.
Like I said, I just wanted the public to know how we came about with those numbers.
Do I have a, the motion is passed in the first reading, last council?
Motion passed on the second, third reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, passed in the second and third final reading. Any other questions or comments, concerns, anything to add? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, did you have something?
Abstain.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with one abstention with Steve Webb.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'll get a clean copy to the clerk tomorrow, and for those of you who are staying on and...
Who's the other abstention?
Mr. Samuel.
Nathan.
And for those of you in 2016, I will get the appropriate paperwork to reflect that change and get in touch with you for your signature, take that from 13 to 15.
Kim, what does she use?
Okay.
Think you'll use that one and take care of that for me. Amy Deering, 2015 OR 63, an ordinance transferring certain funds in the same department, this did pass in our first and second reading already.
Yes, requesting approval on the third reading. There were a few changes and additions since the last meeting, but there were needs within departments in different series and where the budget was, but this is all within the budget that was adopted, so.
I make a motion to pass on the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to pass in the third and final reading. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Deering. I think you're still up. Counsel, we do have a public hearing on this. It's the 2015 OR 64, an ordinance of additional appropriation that passed in the first and second reading.
No changes from the last meeting. Advertised for a hearing tonight, last one of the year, the budget year.
Does counsel have any questions for Ms. Deering before I open up public comment or hearing? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing on the additional appropriation. Is there anyone here who wants to speak for or against? Please step to the podium, speak your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. I'm officially closing public hearing.
Motion to pass on the third and final reading.
Got a motion and a second to pass, 2015 OR 64, in the third and final reading. Any other discussion or question? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Deering.
Thank you.
New business. Rachel Cummings, public hearing, the 2015 OR 65, an ordinance granting petition to vacate a public weigh in the city of Jeffersonville, which is Block 144 at Clark Memorial Hospital. My understanding, this was one that was inadvertently left out when we came before council before?
That's right. I was here, again, Rachel Cummings, with the law firm of Smith Carpenter here in Jeffersonville. I represent RHN Clark Memorial Hospital. When we did some of the title research and campus map of the hospital property, we noticed that there were several old alleyways and old vacated roadways that had not been properly vacated, but were no longer in use. I was here in August on a series of these, and the council passed those vacations. There was one more that was found by the title company that inadvertently was not on the initial list, which is why I'm here today seeking that to be vacated as well. It's a small parcel of what used to be Illinois Avenue. It runs north and south in Block 144 here in the city of Jeffersonville. It's joined by either property that's owned by the hospital and then Spring Street on the other side. We did publish notice in the newspaper back in November, so we have perfected the publication, and I'm here just asking for the ordinance to be approved.
Any question or comment from counsel before I open up the public hearing? Okay, then I'm going to officially open up the public hearing on the vacate of Block 144 at Clark Memorial Hospital. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Please step up to the podium, say your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing none. I'm going to officially close public hearing.
Motion to approve, sorry, 2015 OR 65.
Got a motion and a second to pass, 2015 OR 65, to vacate Block 144 at Clark Memorial Hospital. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I do not see, Ms. Houghman, so you're going to, okay, Les Merkley for the revolving loan request.
This matter comes to the council pursuant to the ordinance. It requires certain loans that the revolving loan fund committee approves also be approved by the city council. This is amount of $50,000. The revolving loan committee did meet, reviewed the application, the financials and so forth for this company, and is recommending a revolving loan of $50,000 for five years to Midoria, which is a tech company that recently purchased the building on Spring Street, 360 Spring Street. You may recall, it was formerly Lavender Hill. Midoria currently is located in the Starks Building in downtown Louisville. They intend to relocate their offices to downtown Jeffersonville. They'll be moving approximately 16 employees. The long-term goal is to grow that... The long-term goal is to grow that to 50 over the next three years with the pay ranges between $50,000 and $60,000 per year along with benefits. They are a website development company and Mr. Andrew Ebersold is here. He's a principal with Midoriya and I will turn it over to him and he can probably explain a little bit more about his business than I can.
Thank you. Yep, hello, my name's Andrew Ebersold and I started this company in 2003. I'm very excited to be relocating to Jeffersonville. I love what's going on in the downtown area and I think that our company is a perfect fit for it by offering a variety of jobs to people that are well-paying, good-paying jobs that they can, some of them actually already live in the area, some are looking to relocate into the area. But we'll be down there every day, day in, day out, shopping, eating, et cetera, and I think it's just a good balance for what's going on in that area. And this money would really help us not only improve the building, but get the building to a point where we can attract more talent to come join our team, so.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just so council's aware, I did go in, I reviewed the application and everything is in order and I didn't see anything.
I've had multiple conversations too and I've talked, spoke to the bank and plus I do walk every night most of the time and that's kind of contrary, but I looked at the construction and the quality's good and I think it's an excellent fit for downtown. I know this, many, many years ago, this was a large building that burnt and there was a fatality and then when the building was tore down, Miss Fleming built a new structure there, so, but I think it's an excellent fit and that's, as I said to the council before I support this project, being in my district.
I agree, we're excited to have you. Welcome to Jeff. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the revolving loan. Is there any further comment or question? They seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Best, best of luck.
I love that excitement.
I just want to make sure of your line, A-B-E-R-S-O-L-E.
Okay, it's A-E-B-E-R-S-O-L-D.
A-E-B-E-R.
S-O-L-D.
D.
D as in doll.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a city council attorney report tonight?
Definitely tonight.
Okay. I do not see any department heads, so was there any public comment?
No one signed up for tonight.
Okay, so we'll move on to council comments. Councilperson Smith.
Two quick things. We had our last, you know, with the 911 consolidation meeting, we had our last meeting last week. We presented a pretty conservative budget for 2015 and our, actually, our budget was pretty much spot on. There was a few, like any other budget, there's a few things, especially on the technological part of stuff that we was buying, that, you know, we're making some changes, but overall, it was, the budget was, it worked out very well. We did approve an option of starting to hire an additional dispatcher in 16. That will be somewhat left up to Brad and that group on how they want to proceed on that. The only problem we've had was with New World and New World is the software that Jeff City had and then now it was agreed to a year or so ago to incorporate a countywide and New World is not holding up to their end of the bargain. So we are holding up some money from them. It's not a substantial amount compared to what they got paid, but, and there will be a letter sent to New World from the attorney, from our attorney, basically that we're just satisfied with them not following through with some of that. But overall, the employees are up, you know, we're up to the staffing that was required and, and the operations board, I've talked to some of them and it's, it's got some bumps, but it's only really been a full year. And overall, I think everybody seemed to be pretty satisfied and the budget and everything worked well, so one year going into it, a little bit of a struggle getting started, but it has, it's, it's worked out well and the New World is, is going to maybe be a legal challenge, but just, and it may not be, but there will be a letter sent, so I just want to make you aware of that. Also, if there, I've, I've talked to, well, John Wieland is supposed to get back from me. Matt had said something to me, it's been several weeks or so ago. You know, this, this last four years, we've had multiple council.
Right.
So I'm going to try to set up a meeting before our next council meeting, December 21st, for him to come in, similar to that one there, just the same and come in and bam and get it over with, so if that's okay, I will let you guys know. He's, he's going, is supposed to call me back in the morning. If that's the case, then I will set it up, so I'll let you guys know ahead of time. I'm going to try to make it half hour to 45 minutes early where we can come in and get, he can get a couple pictures of this current body and then, then that'll be, that whole wall will be this last four years, so.
Well, I appreciate you taking that task on, but keep in mind, we do have a Parks Authority meeting before that meeting.
Oh, we do. Yes, we do.
Had that scheduled for 5:30, so if you'd let Wieland know that.
So would you want it to be before Parks or you want to try to get it, could you...
I would suggest before Parks because this, I don't want to run into a council meeting.
Once he gets his equipment set up, really, it won't take long.
Okay.
So is that, do you want me to try to set up at 5:00 to 5:15?
If he could get here before we did and get it set up.
That's what I'm, okay. But I will, I will follow up on that tomorrow. Like I said, he's supposed to call me back and, and I was told this evening he'll call me back sometime in the morning and as soon as I know that, I will immediately pass that on, okay?
I appreciate that.
That's all I have, thanks.
Councilperson Edie.
You've mentioned what I was going to mention is that we have a Parks Authority meeting before our next final council meeting and that'll be an important meeting, so I hope everybody can make it. We should have all the bids in for the building at the World East Complex.
And when is the bid opening, is that still the 18th?
18th.
At what time?
2:00.
Okay. Thank you.
One other little thing, tidbit, is that, you know, Manuel won the state, almost like six-day division for Kentucky football. In the last two weeks, they didn't have a place to play because of the rain, so they are, are to practice, so they're practicing on our field and they're paying us for that.
Oh.
So just, just to let you know that it was a useful field for our neighbors across the river there.
Okay. Councilperson Wiesworth.
Nothing to speak of.
Councilperson Sellers. Councilperson Will.
I'm good.
Councilperson, okay, councilperson Owen.
Just a couple of things. I don't know if you saw in the newspaper today or not, but Assistant Chief McVoy was mentioned in a, in an article about KFC, I guess, Taco Bell or is it KFC? KFC. He was pulling through the drive-through and somebody made him aware of a robbery in progress and he was able to act quickly and help mitigate the situation. So, you know, just a shout out to Mr. McVoy, Assistant Chief McVoy, and all of our guys and gals in uniform, because they act on things like that without even thinking and no matter what they're doing or where they are. And it's, I think it takes a special person to be that way. So I wanted to mention that. Wanted to say congratulations on the revolving loan being approved tonight. I think he's already left, but that's a great tool that the city offers to, to get that money out, to promote small business or any business really at a great interest rate and it's, it really is a tough, rigorous application process for that specific program. And then also, I wanted to make sure that the council was aware that Mr. Corbin and Ms. Hoffman have both given their notice and will be going elsewhere. Mr. Corbin, I think, has taken a job in the private sector and has accepted a position in the private sector and Ms. Hoffman is going somewhere across the river maybe, looking for a change, so just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. They've both been a terrific help in the last four years. They've both done exceptional work and we're going to miss them.
Councilperson Samuel.
Two quick comments. One, I read where the, I think it was Pause for a Cause, I think was the name of it.
Yeah, I forgot that one.
That raised funds for some vests for our police dogs. I'm thrilled about that, but I had somebody ask me, like, "Don't we have enough money to get our own?" And the answer is yes. We have, we have all kinds of white funding for stuff like that for our police. We buy stuff all the time and I don't know if there's a way to, way to, I don't like that to be the impression from folks is we have to go fundraise to fit our officers for what they need.
But shouldn't they be the responsibility of the department head to come to the workshop and say, "Here's what we're going to add and here's our..."
Sure. And I, I'm not trying to make it critical. I mean, I'm, I'm very glad that we got the money, but, but when I'm asked, well, why do we have to fundraise for that? It makes, makes the city look bad and I, I don't know the answer to that, but I may try to talk to the chief and say in the future, we could, say, where we could have done it with this, this group that is really concerned about animals, really wanted to sponsor it and that, that twists it. So I don't want to sidetrack this, but I just wanted to make that as a comment because it was commented to me. And though, my last comment is, I had the opportunity with, saw a few of you up on the, the bridge with the opening. I appreciate the opportunity to get to go up there and I think for our community, that was a great day to allow people to get up and walk and look around and heard a lot of positives on that and looking forward to later on this, this fall, I guess, to doing the same thing on the east end. It'd be a great, great day.
Better.
I hope so. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to get to go and I thought our Jeffersonville did a great job with controlling all that and we had a bunch of folks in our downtown and it went well, so, thank you.
He brought up about the Abraham Lincoln, he brought up about the pause for a cause and Matt brought up about Officer McVoy, so the only thing that I have left is, if anybody's aware that it's going to be done during the evening, if you got any calls, Allison Lane is being repaved, but because of school and the activity, it's only going to be done in the evening. And I think it's going from the bank there at First Savings just down to Middle Road, so if you get any questions on that, hopefully it'll be completed by Thursday. I did talk with Stephanie with the Street Department, she had, Clark Miles had her call me and fill me in on that, so I don't know. That's a heavy traveled artery, so in case any of the other councils, if you get any questions, I wanted to make you all aware. So other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.